Okay, we are now on to record some communications from directors. Departments of Finance, Law, Public Safety, Public Service, and any other departments applicable. Mr. Kennedy, Department of Finance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to run over some numbers through yesterday, March 31st. Net revenue for the year, this year, for that first quarter, $4,591,655. Net expenses, $4,306,739. Our unexpendable balance at the end of March, $6,264,525. For all funds, that was the general fund, sorry, I should preface that. For all funds, our net revenue for the first quarter, $5,869,620. Net expenses, $5,260,203. So our unexpendable balance for all funds, so it's this year, $3,532,228. Last year at this time, we collected for that first week in April, April represents the March collections. That total last year, $3,598,603. So we're off by $66,000 comparing this year to last. It's declined at 2.4%. Again, that was primarily due to a refund that was issued in January. The collections in April, due to the filing date being in April, will be big for us. We're looking for big receipts in the first week of May from the April collections. Last year in May, we collected $1,570,556. Other than that, we are working our way through the audit of 2023. We will have the auditors, excuse me, on site, leave the week of April 15th. If you have any answer any questions, I'll get these print reports out to you this week, once we close the month of March.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Vice Mayor? If I may, yes, for the day.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On my first day today, I attended the mayor's staff meeting this morning and talked to a couple of department heads later in the day about some upcoming projects. So we'll get to work on those, and if there are others, it's new.
Thank you. Okay, Public Safety, Chief Rogers.
Vice Mayor, your report.
Actually, Chief Rogers, do you mind coming up to the voting? I have a question. Actually, I have two questions, thanks so much. I know that during one of the events in the summer, I'm not sure if it was Lieutenant or one of the sergeants had a fingerprinting kit for the students. They were going to go into PRT and J Zoo and I think it was kindergarteners that they were trying to get fingerprinted. Did that ever happen yet?
Yes, we've utilized this fingerprint kits for some time. I know it's part of our inventory for office and community supplies that we utilize on a regular basis when they're active with public during various events.
Okay, but they don't do, I know that we were talking that they were going to try to get together with Cleveland Heights and try to get into the elementary schools and actually make some kind of program where they would go into the kindergartens and have all the kindergarteners get fingerprinted. Was that how they discussed?
I'd have to look into that further, get more specifics on that, on that type of, they got the fingerprint kits we utilize for some time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Chief Rogers?
Chief, is there plans in terms of what's going to happen Wednesday at, or it's Thursday, I'm sorry, at Lefty's? Because the sound trailer is so congested to begin with. And since that's been announced that Watson will be there, there should be a rather large presence of people.
Yes, we coordinated, we're coordinating with the owners of the property as well as Cleveland Heights, ensuring to have a security need for every sources, detail obligated to that location.
Okay, one other question, is there an issue on, just totally lost the stream. It's okay, I'm emailing.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Rogers.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to expand on the mayor's report about the solar eclipse. We just talked about safety a little bit, specifically the importance of the safety glasses that the city is issuing out there. This information comes from our medical control provider, university hospitals, that led our three shifts to go over some safety. So I just wanted to point out why looking at the sun is so dangerous. It's because of the overload of solar radiation. It can damage the photoreceptor cells in your eyes, and that can sometimes be permanent. So we want to stress the use of quality eclipse glasses. They protect you in ways that regular sunglasses cannot. We want people to be aware of counterfeit glasses. The ones that the city purchased are the ones that are one you want to look for, and it has an ISO standard on it. Cameras, binoculars, telescopes, you still don't want to look for those without the use of safety glasses. And it's questionable if you should look at a cell phone video if you're without the use of safety glass. Injury, it's unlikely to cause pain or discomfort because their retina does not have pain nerves in it. Symptoms can take up to six to 12 hours to appear. Those symptoms could be a headache, blurry vision, sensitivity to light, or a blind spot, like a black spot in your vision. If that occurs, we stress that someone scheduled an appointment with an eye care provider. It's not necessarily something that's an emergency, and the provider will work with them. Usually, they can expect recovery in a few months, although in severe cases, it could be longer or sometimes permanent. So again, it should be a safe event for everybody, something spectacular. We just want to stress that they use the glasses and the right kind of glasses. If you're concerned about pets, there should be no concern for them. And last, we expect to have congestion of cell phones across all carriers. So if you can't get service during that period of time, just be patient and try to plan ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Are there any other questions for Chief Percol? On the service, Mr. Pennington?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening. First of all, I want to announce that we began today the spring cleanup for our tree lawn, yard debris, and leaves. Which will be going out throughout the month of April. It says residents to place items on their tree lawn in regards to brush leaves, that sort of thing, and we'll be around to collect that periodically. On another note, we are again this year performing a pre-passover collection on Monday, April 22nd. We ask that residents have all non-cushion items bagged and out on their tree lawn before 7:30 a.m. We did the collection between 7:30 a.m. and that day. So again, that'd be similar to what we've done in previous years. Then the final item I want to bring up here tonight is that we did roll out the opt-in for the recycling program. We did a soft rollout on Friday evening, March 22nd, and then began promoting it throughout the city this past week. As of 5:30 p.m. tonight, we've had 636 residents opt-in to the program, with eight officially filling out the special assistance forms, and 38 additional that have requested special assistance but have not yet turned in their special assistance forms. I've made contact with these residents, asking them to follow up and fill out the special assistance form. Out of the 636 that have opted in, 517 have asked for the 95-gallon cans, with 119 asking for the 48-gallon cans. The smaller cans amount to maybe 18.7% of the overall can plus. And that's my answer for the question.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yeah, Ms. Laxer?
Mr. Pennington, a brush, is that tied again, four foot length or loose? What?
We will get some loose brush, but we do ask the captain to manage little lengths, and nor be for us to be able to pick it up with our workers.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited that this program is finally moving forward, rolling out. Our household did fill out the application. I did, we did not request assistance, but I did get a screenshot of what the questions were because we had to kind of go to, you know, continue to go in. And it is concerning because we spent quite a bit of time at the last Services and Utilities Committee meeting, really discussing about how to reduce or eliminate barriers to the greatest extent possible so that as many households could participate. One of those barriers being the need for assistance. There could be a variety of reasons why a household would need assistance. And the fact that we're asking for medical, the government, city government is asking for medical proof is concerning because it could be any type of thing that the person would need, medical, health, behavior, behavioral. And I worry that A, some people would then choose not to recycle because it's really none of the government's business for recycling purposes. And B, for those people who did submit for assistance but perhaps are being denied, the possibility that they would perceive it as being arbitrary or discriminatory. So I think we, not I think, I know you and I spoke about, and I believe in the meeting, asking the law director for guidance. Was that asked for?
I've not had a chance to ask the law director, but in regards to the questionnaire, there are three ways to apply. One is being 75 years of age or older. Two is being disabled, which we do have a notation on there that they can have a physician indicate they have a need, but not necessarily give us what that need is. And the third is a line designated as other, which is where we would look at various requests that may not be within the purview of the other two categories, and make a determination on those based upon the needs. Convenience, however, is not a need for special assistance, which I've only complained one person so far in the program asked for special assistance.
It says that the information that's being afforded is confidential. Who has access to that? Who is viewing that information?
I have the access to that information.
So you're making a unilateral decision?
Yes.
But I'd like to ask, at the June 10th Services and Utilities Committee meeting, if you would please provide a report of all people who requested assistance but were denied. I'd be interested, and I think the committee would be interested in the reasons. And I also want to ask the public, if anyone is reluctant to sign up because they are worried about providing such confidential information, to reach out to council and administration and let us know so we can perhaps help Mr. Pennington with that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. In regards to that, we did follow a similar pattern to what both Beechwood and Cleveland Heights used. Cleveland Heights uses something by year, Leonard. Beechwood uses age at his age on their limit. So our policy did follow closely in alliance with the, our neighbors.
You know, I think age, ageism is a discriminatory thing. I'm not sure why, I mean, I've worked with older adults my whole life. In fact, our agency, our older adult services program starts at 55. So I'm not sure what that's based on. And I even asked you if you were 80 or 75, because, you know, we all have personal issues from time to time that could impair how we, whether or not we're able to bring the trash, the recycling. So again, I worry about that, and if someone may question that seriously. Thank you.
Is Marshall to do the question?
I'll do it. So I'm trying to, are you speaking to the mic? I'm, I'm on.
Okay.
I just wanted to get clarification. So if you said that you were reviewing the forms and you weren't the person to be given confidential information and making a decision, and that includes medical decisions?
The certification on that would be something where, if they submit, if they, the physicians submit, that form is loaded in there, and I look at it as long as it's a valid reason. They're just checked off as one being approved. I don't look into what their ailment is. I just, I look that there's that certification.
So how do you determine if it's a valid reason? That's what you're confusing me. Because a valid reason means you're looking at the medical diagnosis and whatever it is they're submitting to you, and you yourself are determining if that medical reason is acceptable or not. No?
If there is a medical diagnosis, that typically is something that would be considered approvable. Where I make a determination more in alliance is if someone clicks on other and says, because I don't feel like taking the can out of the curve, those are the ones that get denied.
So what type of, I guess I'm still confused, because how do you, what are your qualifications to determine what medical condition is an acceptable or typical one that should keep them from being, because I'm just trying to understand what are your qualifications in that area?
I am not looking at it from a medical professional perspective. I'm looking at it, did they provide a medical reason? And if they have provided a medical reason, I don't get into questioning that much. I just, I check off.
So both the doctors did?
Correct.
They can take the track down for medical reasons, then that, that?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
Ms. Laxer?
I'd like to direct this question to Mr. Bryan. When those forms come in, since they're held here, are they accessible on a public information request?
No, they would not be, it's medical information, so there won't be an exception.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Follow-up. If it isn't medical, if someone gave the age, that's accessible? How do, I think what I'm asking is how much of the information the city is collecting in order to make this determination is shielded from a public information request that I would hope would never come, and we would never think would come? But you know, as others I do, there's always a surprise somewhere. So how much of it is protected?
I guess I would need to look into that further. The medical information is something that's protected. Personal information, such as, we're not asking for social security numbers, those types of things, you know, bank account numbers that would normally be protected, age, I'm not so sure, so I would have to look into that.
Okay. I, I mean, I understand what we need to do it, and I, you know, in order to ensure there's a legitimate reason why the city should come up and get the can, we look back and forth. But I think that's a, it also can be a sticky record because of the fact that a lot of information the city collects is accessible under public information requests. And it is something that every city has to juggle, so yeah, if you would look into it, I'd certainly appreciate it. I think sometimes we'll leave the parameters on things where I'm sure when we finally find out about what those parameters are, at least on the council level, sometimes it's turned out that things maybe should have been done, so I'd rather have that cleared. And that's why I'm surprised you didn't talk to the law director. That's all. It's usually much more precise, Mr. Pennington.
And just to follow up, some things, you know, can't be, have to be redacted, some things are permissible, and then some things have to be disclosed. You look at the form and see what's on there, and you know what it means.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Building Department.
No report next time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Do you mind coming to the voting?
I know you're just back for, what, two weeks now, or a week and a half?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So you might not have the answers to these questions. Lefty's came in and got all its permits?
Yes.
Okay. Second thing, I understand there's some stuff hanging with the signs, that they had to go back to ARB. Has any of that happened yet?
They submitted today their final signs, and we forwarded that to the board, and they have been discussing back and forth by email all day prior to them being coming up next week, their thoughts on the one side, so, the ground side.
Okay, one final question, you know, this is something I've been following up on, on a consistent basis. Pizza Bogo, what's going on with them?
Last week, they pulled some more plumbing permits and things, and I have been in contact with them. And they appear to be proceeding at a fairly normal rate, perhaps not quite as fast as some commercial jobs, but they are proceeding consistently.
And one final question, only because of the mess with Family Dollar, where a lot of that work, there weren't permits sold or anything in regards to that. Those ancillary things that are outside of Whole Foods were permissible for those that were permissive or necessary?
That was actually before my time, or during the time I was gone, nothing, the only Whole Foods things that have happened since I've been back was they pulled a permit, or they, I take that back. They submitted plans which are under review for our fire alarm system last week, and so those are under review right now. And there was nothing about, you talk about the little buildings up front?
Yeah.
Yeah. I saw those today when I drove down to Tuckett Gardens. And I did not remember seeing those when I was here before, so are those new then?
Certainly, definitely.
There, to my knowledge, I have not seen any indication that those submitted for permits are approvals, and by state law, those would require approvals. So I can look into that, yes.
I'd appreciate it. I know when we had the issue with Family Dollar, they had those smaller ones, they were smaller than the ones that are at Whole Foods. And I think when we finally got Dennis to go over there and really take a look, that was one of the things he listed, and permitted, that wasn't permitted. Of course, they did all the interior work without permits as well, so.
So I did notice, I hit the brakes when I went by, and I did notice there were like electric panels on the outside wall and everything. Has the fire been over there, Bob, at all, do you know? I'm not sure. I'm sure, okay, I can talk to Andy and Luke, yeah, I'll talk to them. I'll be with Luke at the Lefty's at 9 a.m. for the hood suppression. So we'll maybe stop and look into that.
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
No problem. Anybody else?
Thank you. As a, Mr. Angel.
Good evening. The grass cutting bid that was sent out two weeks ago didn't actually have any bids. So we, I talked with Kelly, and we re-submitted advertisements for March 28th and April 4th. The bids will be open April 11th. I already actually heard from two companies who will be submitting bids. So it's time to go, do alert council as to who the new bidder, or who the bidder was that went, along with their pricing and their qualifications. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Ms. Laxer?
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
The exterior letter?
I actually sent that to your email today.
When?
Before, before, well, it's about 5:00 or so.
I checked my email, it had 5:15, 5:20?
You might want to check it in.
So it came in after? I can pull it up now.
Okay.
Couple of questions on this.
Sure.
According to the minutes from 318, which we just approved, you had indicated you were working on that letter with Mr. Cicero?
Correct.
That week? Did that happen?
Can't remember if we actually worked on it that week or not. I do remember that, it was at least two weeks ago, we talked about it. Last week, he sent me his Redline version, which I looked at, and there was one small change that I made before I sent it to you.
It was 6:50?
Okay.
I had you.
Okay.
When I got there. The second question is a follow-up. When we had the building and housing meeting, it was discussed for that letter to go out to the 400 homes that had not been inspected, will it be going out?
Yes.
When will it be going out?
I believe during the meeting, we discussed if it reviewed before it goes out. So if it's reviewed at the meeting, it'll go out after the meeting.
Okay. One final question, why did it take almost six months? Okay. One final question. Why did it take almost six months? I'm just curious.
Six months forward.
We started talking about the fact that, well, let me put it this way. You had sent me the original letter, which I sent to Mr. McConville. This was back in November. This is April. So five months later, we finally have gotten to the point of what Mr. McConville had told the administration. And I understand he had a year and a half that it had to be changed. Why did it take five months? And the reason I'm asking is not because I want to pick, but because some of those residents over there had been posting about this on a discussion board. They had been following up with me very religiously. When would they get new information? Was it valid? What is the new information? I just wonder why it took five months.
During the building committee, one of the building committee meetings, actually more than one, I believe I explained that the decision was made to not send the letter out. That's the reason why. That's it.
And we asked you to write the letter so we could see it. I mean, we could have had this all approved a couple of months ago. Mr. Engelbrecht, usually you're much more efficient and you, even you will admit that. You follow up on things. You do these things. For some reason, this letter just never, never moved. And it's a problem.
The decision was made to not send the letter out. That's it.
And we kept asking why. I'm serious. You know, if it was above your pay, if it was above your pay grade, that's fine. Then maybe I should direct my question to the person that said, don't send it, rather than you. Were you aware the letter wasn't getting anywhere now?
I'm fully aware that we initially did not send the letter, that we were going to work on this prospectively. This was a letter that we'd been using for quite a few years here at the city. And at the time, I was under the impression that most of the work had already been done and that sending a letter out would be confusing. Getting new information about how the, there were still a number of homes that had not yet been inspected and that there'd been a fair amount of time that had gone by. We went ahead and said, let's go ahead and prepare that letter and go ahead and send it to the homes that had not yet been inspected, instead of just waiting until we move on to the next phase of the program. We went over this in committee. We've discussed this already. So I'm giving you no new information.
No, we didn't. Because all we heard was, no, we're not going to send the letter out. And anytime we asked for the new letter to be constructed, we got no reply. So as far as committee was concerned, we were just in limbo. And some of these things seem to take an inordinate amount of time. I'm glad it's finally done.
Well, I'm getting a lot of complaints here this evening about the law department. We've been going through a transition in our law department. Our new law director was sworn in a few moments ago. We have a number of things that Mr. McConville was working on, a number of things that Mr. McConville did not finish. Mr. Bryan is going to be taking over quite a few things that remain outstanding. The work of the city, of course, continues and we're happy to have Mr. Bryan on board. Mr. Engelbrecht has numerous tasks besides drafting this letter and then awaiting review from either the law director or the assistant law director. So I would not put this on Mr. Engelbrecht. I think the line of questioning here is unnecessary and unthought.
I don't. And the reason I don't, Mayor, is this. That took probably when Mr. Engelbrecht sat down with Mr. Cicero. It probably didn't take all that long because the procedure had been laid out by Mr. McConville when he met with both you and Mr. Engelbrecht because he sent me an email about it. So it was done back in November. All it had to do was be put together. I get it that some of these things slipped through the crack and I get it that sometimes you don't want to move on them for whatever reason. But council's the one that gets residents that ask legitimate questions. And yes, probably that letter was written at a time when it was legal for the city to just go into the backyards and inspect. But you know as well as I do, Ohio law changes because there are court cases that come out. And we need to be sharper than that. We need to be able to tell our residents legal ways that we can do things so that we don't end up, because they find out. People were posting the court cases in UH discussion. That's pretty bad when they post the court case and say, the city of University Heights doesn't know what it's doing. It's an embarrassment to the city. Thank you, Ms. Engelbrecht.
Ms. Mitchell?
I must have missed something. Letter you said that there was a lot of complaint about the law department. Can you tell me an example? Because I totally missed it.
I think we're well off the track here. This is supposed to be about the law department's report.
I simply asked you a question about what was the, I missed the complaint about the law department. Who was complaining to the law department? I missed it.
I don't understand your question.
You said that today we had had a lot of complaints, we had heard a lot of complaints about the law department. I missed the complaint. I didn't hear anybody complain. I was asking you what complaint you heard about the law department.
I'm talking about several things that have been brought up this evening about what the law department may or may not have done in conjunction with what the administration's doing. Anything from the, the cart pickup and the information that was requested to now deciding about the letter.
I didn't make that connection at all. So maybe it would be, I did go on misinformation accurate. I did hear it from some of the staff.
Ms. Sance?
Thank you. Information about the recycling had nothing to do with action or inaction by the law department. It had to do with action, inaction by the administration. And your comment just now, throwing the, I have the floor.
What was the inaction by the administration?
I have the floor.
I have to put a point of view.
I have the floor.
Ms. Sance, you can reply here after Ms. Sance finishes.
Thank you. It's yet another attempt, more than an attempt. It is deflecting from administrative accountability. All I did, I had spoken to Mr. Pennington directly and we talked about the importance of him speaking with you, with the law director before making such a decision. For the reason I stated publicly in the, in the committee meeting and again publicly now, that the last thing we want is for someone to perceive an injustice that they, that they could not get their recycling at the backyard because of a perceived discriminatory decision or something like that. And so that had nothing to do with the law director not taking an action. That's what I meant. I hope that's clear. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, right up to the city engineer.
Good evening. So we've been, I'm just working on plan reviews, trying to set up the street repair program, pavement marking program, getting some feedback including water on the still speed water replacement. And our surveyors are out here working on the YAVI alpha survey today, or today, and I'll be back out hopefully tomorrow if the weather doesn't provide that. So.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Sance?
Thank you, thank you. It is a pleasure to welcome you. I appreciated our discussion. We look forward to you presenting at the June 10th Service and Utilities Committee Meeting at six o'clock regarding the street repair program and whatever else you would like to help us understand better. It is something very near and dear to residents to know your, the administration's plan to move forward with street and curb repairs. And at least to also that sometimes, oftentimes there are more intensities on certain streets. So to learn more and to understand better what to expect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to communications.
Hey, Vice Mayor, Dr. Dean. If one, I have two items to report on tonight. As the mayor mentioned earlier, the state of the city is April 11th at the library. Come for the mayor's speech. Stay for the announcement of the summer concert series through our annual hype video. We also have announcements on performers at Fall Fest and some of not all of performers at the upcoming Juneteenth celebration. Secondly, as Mr. Pennington mentioned earlier, we've begun rolling out communications on the, through May 31st. A bunch of different methods. I reach every resident three times. And the strategy there is if they're reached three times, they've known about it and they can choose to opt in, they can choose not to opt in. So that's what our goal is. And I think through Mosaic, through social media, through emails, through the website, through postcards that will happen, city events and even some other ways that perhaps we haven't thought of yet. You know, a lot of things happen between now and end of May. And we'll give that message out to residents and they can decide if the program is something they want to participate in at this time. What I want to avoid is I don't want everyone waking up June 1st or waking up in the fall when all, everyone on the street has a card. Like, where's mine? I didn't know about that. So I want to make sure that everyone knows about it and we'll try to use as many different methods as possible. Some people will hear about it 25 times, but you know, some people might hear it once or twice, but at least three times is our goal with every resident.
Thank you. Ms. Sance? Thank you. I am so glad to hear that. My husband kept saying, how are people supposed to hear about, how are people supposed to know that? I had told him so. He signed up for our council, but he's still waiting to see. So does the mosaic put up every single household?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so that's great. That's at least, everybody. That's one. Wonderful. Okay, looking forward to hearing about that and hopefully that can, if people didn't hear about it. I do have a question about the recycling rollout at 3:44 today that I got. So I noticed, you know, scrolling down to the ballot plate, scrolling to the bottom, there was a picture of three carts. There were two different sized blue carts and then a big green cart. Could you tell me what the big green cart is?
Honestly, it's just the part that I put in. Oh, so you're right.
Okay, because we don't want to, we don't, we want to meet expectations.
Yes, very good.
Okay. Please be careful. Recycling is still confusing to people. Yeah.
If we're talking about the same picture, I think that was almost going to go up on the website then to go good hard looking at it for other reasons besides the very good ones that you mentioned. Well, I'm talking about with the website, not only is it already a link on the website, but you might recall with other programs we've rolled out where you go to a website instead of seeing the homepage right away. It's, you know, another, it's like a front door. I think it's a technical website term four. So instead of going right to a university site, it's a recite or an opt-in program. Click here to opt in or click here to be redirected to the website. So that probably with better graphic, we'll build tomorrow involving Cooper.
Have another question?
Yes.
So again, I got my folks contacted today and there was this, mayor said that this was not the solid waste district. Did you have anything to do with this design of the those cart that was in here?
That is probably, we've been using it for.
So I want to point out something. I can get it out of the bag.
Your question is for getting it out of the bag. It's an older cart and it's, we've been using it, like I said, I think for at least a year. Mayor feel free to chime in if you know. And I had some, something to do with that. Deanna worked on it and I think, I think the county's wrong.
So the first thing I see is 24-hour drop-off recycling. If that isn't confusing, I don't know what is. Okay. So just please, you know, make sure the message is what we're doing and perhaps it refers to power board or something else, but it's not our program. Right? It's, okay. Thank you. And just, you're meticulous with some of the things that you put in the mosaic and some other things you put out and this just was very confusing.
Yeah. I understand that over the past year or so, perhaps you've been frustrated that we haven't had more stuff about recycling. But we, you know, now that the program is different, you know, I don't want it to be like, I don't know, if you're familiar with the movie Men in Black where they hold up a pad and click it so people forget stuff. So I don't want it to be, hey, we're going to teach you about this. Like, forget all that. Here's a new program. So I would rather see, I think it would be easier for residents to explain it once as opposed to, you know, let's work a little bit more on the old program. Now here's a new program. Is that a perfect plan? Maybe, maybe not, but that's the direction.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Weiser?
Number one, I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
I hear that you lose the honesty. Two questions. I, the Friday thing, I went on the survey. Who designed that survey?
I'm sorry, which survey, please?
It was a survey about recreation. There was a link to a survey?
It was, let's see, mostly Dan Brum Fisher. I had seen drafts that I found out the intern worked on that as well, I believe. Councilman Cooney, we have seen that one. There are a whole different works of his.
We actually discussed that in a creation meeting. That was discussed in the last recreation.
That's the meeting. I got notification of like the day before it happened and unfortunately I had something booked. I had love to have kind. I did hold the doodle to do it without. I wasn't on a doodle.
I did, I did request for all.
I wasn't on, I wasn't on your doodle. I'm not on the.
Do you want me to speak or are you just going to keep talking?
Go ahead, Mr. Cooney.
When I sent the request to the summit, all our committee members and council and the mayor. So I did ask that all council members get put out the email.
Didn't get it, sorry. On it, there is a question about a dog park.
Correct.
Note about one acre being used. That it takes up to one acre.
We discussed that at the previous, not the last, but the one prior. If they're of interest with it, that's why the question was put out, the survey.
I know. Here's, if you'll let me finish, Mr. Cooney.
Yes, my.
That's my point. Probably 95% of the people in this city do not know how big our park is, whether it's two acres, three acres, five acres, or I believe it is six acres. So if you're asking if they're going to approve something or want something that would take one-sixth of the park, you might get a different response from somebody who thinks it's only one-third of the park. That's all. In, in developing surveys, that is an issue that can come up. The second thing, I just wanted to make that point. Second thing, once again, what's going on with the block share?
What happened, it's working now. What happened at the beginning of the meeting is, including jump in if, if I'm misstating anything. You have to update the app to get it started. Unfortunately, updating the app this evening took longer than anticipated. Usually you update the app, it's five minutes. It took 20 minutes or longer. So the entire meeting, probably in two forms will be updated. It's streaming now. That's a complete meeting, but it's streaming now. But what probably what we'll do to make it whole, we can, I can probably do two things. It's a little redundant, but one, stream the entire hour then. And then second, I can. And then, second, I can splice together the owl part that covered when the live stream wasn't working, put that together with live streaming, and then there's two ways people can watch, except for some fans are, people, some residents are, like, one forming more than the others. So that's unfortunate that that happened today, but I think that we have an interim period as very exploited to figure it out.
I, I can appreciate the issue, because there is always the time when you go to jump on Zoom and wants to update. I've always learned to double-check Zoom well in advance of the start time, and you might want to do that since it's picking up. Because it is, there are people that feel they get better audio. And considering the mayor made such a commitment, and has followed through on it, and I think it's wonderful, that we will be as transparent as possible with our meetings. I think trying to always default to Zoom in the owl, we do lose. And I think you and I have talked about this. Number one, people that don't, and in mind.
I, I understand.
People that, also that people don't know what we're saying. Things like that are frustrating to a resident who actually has taken the time to log on, and either run the tape or run the thing. And if we get better audio quality, I think it's important. I think, you know, we're all here for the residents, and for us. So thank you for the explanation, though.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's fair criticism, and while I think, you know, none of us love or be perfect, we'll keep striving for that.
Wasn't that as criticism?
Okay, not criticism.
It really wasn't. It was making pointed out.
Yeah, you're, you're.
We work together, and, and if we can't point things out.
Absolutely.
We're not going to improve.
Yeah, maybe I could just send back more of it, thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
You were saying that it takes sometimes five minutes to update, but it took 20 today. Now, is that, when you say it takes 20 minutes or five minutes to update, is that when you push start to start the meeting, the update takes place? Or can it be prepared Friday to the start of the meeting?
That is, I don't know, but we'll, we'll get here earlier, we'll make sure that.
About 6:30, 5:00, that's what I'm saying, so she has plenty of time for it to.
Well, maybe it was longer than 20, there, there were.
Okay.
So the update wasn't the issue. I was able to update it perfectly fine, but it was crashing every single time I would try to open the app. And I don't have access to, like, the Google Play Store in order to uninstall and install it, so I will have to work on it tomorrow in the office. But I just have it on my own little device right now, that's why I got it to, but it's still not working on the tablet. So it's not the update that was the problem, it's the app that was the problem.
So maybe we may need to have something available. And I don't know, probably, if, if you had access to, like, a laptop, would you have been able to do that update easier? I'm just asking, I, I don't know, I'm just.
I don't know, the, it's on, uh, from the Lenovo, I'm not too familiar with it, so I think maybe I'll do a pressure test. See if I can get it on the laptop, so.
Don't have to pick Mr. Cook's brain on that one. Or are you, no, I know, the, the interns are a lot more technologically, yeah, they meet us every time, Mr. Cook. But maybe one of them can magic.
Yeah, the interns can't figure it out, find a, a number.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, sure.
Ms. Pennington, were you applying at the survey, was it going to be a dog park at the Walt?
No.
It doesn't say that in the survey at all. It doesn't say that. It just says, would you be interested in dog park, essentially, is what the question is.
Which takes an acre.
Other land in the city besides the Walt, where could it go? Right now, we're caging interest for that. That's the reason why there are questions without being specific, that's the work we do.
Yeah, you're right, Mr. Cooney, but everybody under the summons has said, why can't we have a dog park at the Walt? Which is why, which is why the assumption was made, because people have said that to me.
Thank you for the notifications.
Thank you, Ms. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Can Ms. Drucker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have a tour, but I do need to request a meeting session tonight. So, it's all right, but I'll be done.
Ms. Drucker, could I ask, next time, you used to give, like, what are vacancies for for commercial, things like that? Could you record that next time?
I will definitely record that. Yes, I actually get those stamps too, I, I, not, not off the top of my head, but I do keep those every month.
Ms. Pennington?
Welcome, then.
Thank you, and thank you, Reverend, for your well wishes. Appreciate it. So, yes, don't forget that executive session, okay?
Yeah, Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Zoncode, do you know what our next steps are, and when they're going to be re-engaged, so we can get a committee meeting started?
Yes, I, actually, we were in contact today. So here's, they said in the next couple of weeks, they should be giving me some materials. Because how we discussed the Walmsale project, just, they're talking about doing the districts. And then their timeline would be for, by the end of summer, to have a full administrative, ready for a full administrative review. But they'll be giving me materials to start handing out ahead of time. And then, yeah, they said in probably the next two to three weeks, they should be sending me some information.
So let me ask you, maybe this is a question you ask them, whether it's your preference, their preference, but at some point, when should we engage the committee to look at what we have seen, illicit feedback, so that they're not creating zoning codes around some people maybe we're not interested in? Or maybe we are, I don't know, but we have to cage that interest from the committee. Do you think we should do this before the next step, or after the next meeting, and before that?
My understanding was they, they were going to send me the information, I would disperse it, and then we would talk about getting a meeting scheduled, because that was always, it was to keep everything going along, but to make sure that the committee members had that information before we had the meeting publicly. But, and then, remember, we're also going to have actual public hearings, where we want to hear from the residents, when we have something to present to the, to the residents. But yes, we are supposed to have another meeting in person, like we did at the library last time.
Okay, so maybe.
Before, before the end of summer, that's before they do all that, finally.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they're not putting time into something that maybe we're just not going to go down that road, or. But I kind of got to learn that from committee members themselves. There's been some feedback in meetings, but I, the. It would be good to hear from the committee members, is this the right direction?
Right.
This way, yes or no, so we can tailor up the approach.
And I think the last two meetings we've had, it's been really good dialogue for the folks that have come to the meetings, even if somebody's not on the committee, because it's been a smaller group, everybody's, has a chance to speak up. So there has been some really good dialogue, so we want to keep that going.
Thank you. Now, go to the main agenda. Agenda letter A is ordinance 2024-15, providing KIAB to founding consent to construct the re- consent to construct the resurfacing of Walmsale Center Road from Fairmont to Cedar, and University Heights, and declaring an emergency on first reading. I know we have Mr. Mack from, an engineer from the county here. I'm sure Mayor, if you want to introduce this.
Yes, Eric Mack is here. He is from the County Department of Public Works. He is the chief planning and programming engineer in the county. He is also a university's president, delighted that he happens to be the one presenting this evening. He has brought a presentation this evening. He is, I think the laptop went to sleep in the room, but it looks like it's back up now. And with that, I would say that, that we don't necessarily have to pass this this evening. If you don't have all your questions answered, but not to take away from Mr. Grant's presentation, but, but he thinks I'm attractive, we'll want to pass something shortly, and, you know, allow it to begin in the May. So, so it's my hope that this will, this presentation will answer your questions, and we can either, you know, take this up on during this evening, or, or take it up in the next possible. So without further ado, Mr. Mack.
Hi, I'm Woody. Thank you for having me. So to next presentation, I wanted to talk to you about, the county has several different funding sources for roadway projects. This particular road received NOACA federal aid. So NOACA lists together, like, like a list of projects based upon the pavement condition rating, as well as the average daily traffic, or the ADT. And once they have their list, they then finalize it, and they allocate funds to that list. So the county participates annually in this, and we have about 10 projects ongoing every year in one phase or another. And so how this program typically works is that the federal, the participation is like 80%. And then the local match, which is 20, then, then it's split 10% from the community, and, and then 10% from the county. That's how we typically do it. And how this happened was NOACA funded not only the University Heights, but also South Euclid. So the stretch of the project goes from Fairmount all the way up to Mayfield. And so when there's multiple cities involved, they ask us to oversee that, to then assist. And so we, again, I talked about the construction of that 80-20 split. And then the design, we typically handle 60%, and then each city has the remaining 40%. So as I said, this is a resurfacing project, and through the course of the design, we can figure out what the final lane configuration is, and, and like what the striping pattern is. I know we had a resident talk about wanting narrower lanes and that kind of thing. That's all on the table, and it's part of the design process. So we're trying to get to that design process, and I'll have some more slides here. We have nearly 20,000 cars a day out on that stretch. And the payment, and, and the payment condition rating is fair to poor. And according to our numbers, it was, that, 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 it was last rehabbed in, in 2001, and then, and then 2007. Typically, we, so like, we like to resurface roads every 10 to 10 to 15 years. It's, it's a 2.3 miles, and it's in two different county council districts, 10 and 11. Here is the funding breakdown. These are approximate costs based off the federal contributions. So South Euclid's at the top, and then University Heights is at the bottom. And so we have federally, they've given us $3 million. So that is 80% of 3.75 million, so that's how we get to 3.75. And then, like I said earlier, we would split with the city, the, the additional of fund of, so like 10%, 10%. So each would have 375,000. The design, which is approximately 5% of the construction, is 187,000. That would be split, that would be split 60-40. And then during construction, after we have awarded to, to some contractor, we then monitor the construction, and we have in-house staff that handles it. And they would be working out there every day, and we would split that 50-50, and that's typically how we do things. So a grand total, the project is going to cost the city about $543,000, and it's going to cost the county 500,000, 81,000. So with that cost, there is also, potentially, this fall, there are, there's, there is another grant that we pursue through the, through the OPWC, which is the Ohio Public Works Fund, and we can chase additional funds to help cover that local percent. So where we're at now is we need to find an engineering firm that can do the, the plans for us. We use in-house staff to, to review the plans, and also process the plans. And in, then on February 1st, we put an RFQ out on the street, and we've got 11 different firms, and we use quality-based county standard procedure to then select on March 19th, three firms. We have three firms, being AECom, Chugrin Valley Engineering, and HNTV. We have, and are in the process of making the formal contract to the county council right now. What we would like is the city's input on what firm to use as part of this design process. And then from there, the county can scope and contract with that firm. We, we, so we typically follow this for all our roadway projects, and every year, we hire three firms. And once the design's complete, we will then build it. And my last slide is a present, this is a schedule. So last spring, NOACA approved this money, so that's the spring of '23. And then, then the county approached the cities during the fall of '23, after it was finalized. Then they contact us, and we contact each city. And we are in the scope, schedule, fee stage right now. We're going to then hopefully move into a design during the summer and fall. And then the final design will be the fall of '24 to the spring of '25. And we imagine this selling to a contractor in the fall of '25. This, this construction then would begin in the spring of '26, and it's a two-cycle, it is two calendar year type of construction, because of its length being 2.3 miles. And the same package that we sent to University Heights has also been sent to South Euclid, and we received confirmation that they're working it through their internal council system right now to approve it through South Euclid. So we would need confirmation by May 1st to stay along schedule. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much for, for having me in the University Heights. I think so, I have a, I have a few questions. When would University Heights have to lay out the funds to the county?
So typically, on this type of project, once the construction is bid, which will be the fall of '25, we select whatever contractor's going to do that, that construction, for whatever the dollar amount is, we will then invoice the city for their portion, so that 500, whatever number that was. That's, so it'll be the fall of '25.
So we have about 18 months to have that money together. Okay, and what's, is there a typical amount? You said that Public Works possibly has more grant funding available. Is there a typical amount that they give?
So the, so the Ohio Public Works grant is, is a competitive grant, and the county has had great success with it. And in that, because we have a project that's federally funded, we show that there is a large portion already committed to the project, which helps our score. So we would most likely chase the 20% remaining that could cover our share, as well as each city's share, as part of that. So in essence, we'd walk away with just several hundred thousand dollars going in each hostel. Agreed, really reducing that number down from half a million.
So you're saying it could be 20%?
Correct.
So up to 20%.
Because we don't know what the competition is, as far as throughout the state. But typically speaking, this project would score well, so that's why we would pursue it. And that's every September, and then we find out around December.
And the county is the one that applies?
We are the sponsor, yes.
Okay, so we have another possibility of getting 20% off?
Yes.
Okay, and then my last question, right, actually, two more questions. It's both sides of Walmsale.
Yes, yes, it's, it's the five-lane section. We're in both sections of Walmsale meeting, which, yeah, we're.
I'm saying it's both, um.
South Euclid and University Heights.
No, 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 I'm saying both directions.
Northern South.
Northern South. North and South.
Yes, both those, yes, both directions.
Okay, and also, does the city have any input on, we, we had these bump ups that were, that were made a few years ago that are, are not working for our city. Um, we, we, I don't know if you're, if you know what I'm talking about, I, like, Hill Look over there. We thought, you know, and actually, I think, was it NOACA that did it? I think it was.
We're talking about the hit block crossings.
We're talking about the mid-block crossings. There's two of them on Warrensville Center Road and the park stretch or the decision.
And whatever the city would like to do with them, whether they keep them, one, one of them taken out, we are willing to work with the city.
So, we got any input?
Yes, for sure. Also with the striping, we, we like want to talk about what that final transfer section looks like. You know, the lane width, the white lanes parking, whatever it is. So, yes, you definitely have any input. So typically, when we have a stage review process, we will have plans and we give them to the city engineer to then review. So, we send them to ODOT as well. So, we have a month and then they look at them and they have comments and we then incorporate them into, in that stage. So.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, yeah, thank you for writing these slides, it's very helpful. And you mentioned that the, the city will have a say in the selection of the firm.
Yes, we would like to get your input on what, what firm. Because we don't have a scope schedule fee yet, we can only do that based off of their previous work and their, and their qualifications. And so, we can send you their statement of qualifications if.
Yes, that would be very comfortable. I was actually surprised to see two very large firms and one not so large firm. So, it's a good mix. So, I'd like to see what, what those documents look like. But one thing I'd like to address, I don't know if this is effects of timing or schedule, but this is a very important item, is, you know, we're in the middle of a zoning redo right now. And one of the components of that zoning comprehensive redo is to look at Warrensville Center Road, how that's programmed. And we talked about doing mixed use, density, townhomes, that sort of thing. And the discussion came up in our strategy sessions of overnight parking on Warrensville Center Road. So, if that's something that we're going to consider, again, these were just discussions, it's first blush. As you heard, we're going to have another meeting in the summer. And I'll see this completed until maybe the end of the year. How would that sort of thing impact the schedule? Because there are things that we need to figure out internally here, whether we do on-street parking overnight versus not doing that. So, looking at what, because it sounds like you don't have a scope yet, full design scope. I guess would the engineer be engaged in that as a, like a programming item or how, is it master plan first?
It sounds like that's more of a city has to figure out what they want to do and how they want the lane configuration to look and whether it's parking or white lanes or whatever. Once you tell us, we can incorporate that in the plans. So, we're going to sell this the fall of twenty-five. So, we have about eighteen months to figure out. Is that enough time for you and the city?
Well, eighteen months seems like a good amount of time, but when I see here that the design will begin this fall, I have just a little bit of concern about that because, you know, there's, there's conversation here. Do we do a road diet, bring those curves in? Okay, but then what happens if we decide we want street parking and we spend all this money on curves? And that can be back. So, I, I want to make sure we get it done right. This is a really important project and it's a very expensive project. And so, I guess, when is the, when do you need to have from the city an answer of what those lanes would look like?
I would say ahead of the final design. So, I would say the winter of twenty-five. We would need to know what the final lane configuration is because that's during the final design process.
So, in the final design, winter of twenty-five is around the final, okay.
Yes, so, so, probably somewhere in, in that range. Because we're talking about striping. This is a resurfacing project, so we're going to, to resurface from curb to curb, kind of, and leave the curb there. So, it's going to be whatever the paint on, on pavement looks like for what you want within that area.
Sure, okay, so you're thinking, you know, January, February, twenty-five, correct? Simplistic, okay.
But we, we can make adjustments because again, if it's not getting into curb bump outs, it's, it's just paint put on pavement.
The paint's fine, I, I did that. Yes, curves are expensive. So, if, if the strategy is to bring the curves in and then at the end of our zoning meeting, we decide we want overnight parking, we've got to bring it back out, that's going to be a headache. So, I want to make sure we just get it done right. So, it sounds like we'll have some more engagement meetings for summer. Get our act together, but okay, so now we know early winter twenty-five.
Yes, okay.
Ms. Meiser?
I'll tell. I know years ago, part of it was grant, part of it was loan. Is the county thinking this would come as a grant or a?
In regards to?
What potentially we might get from that?
We, we typically do not take a loan from, from the OPWC because it's not physically responsible to take a loan out on a road because it's going to need repair within ten to fifteen years. And you're paying back the loan and by the time you've done paying back, you have to redo it. We would do it possibly on a structure, like a bridge, like something more expensive, a larger. So, this would be a road.
A bridge?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that because I know they have two different programs.
For sure, yeah. And we would, we do not typically do the loan.
Ms. Meiser?
Thank you, best friend. With, with part of the per, the construction being in University Heights and the other being South Euclid, do you foresee, and lasting over a couple of years, do you foresee the construction on one side happening one year and then construction on the other side the other year?
Because we don't have plans yet, but seeing the layout of the project, I would say that yes. Probably seed or root a little years. I don't know which, I don't know which we would go first. That's what the engineers will figure out as part of the design. And then also what the maintenance of traffic will look like. Well, obviously, because there's twenty thousand cars, we have to keep lanes open during construction. So, traffic will probably be pushed to one side while the other ones under construction and then flip it.
Most likely. So, could that potentially impact when we have to spend the funds or would we be locked in at that award?
So, so the federal money is, is slated edible. It doesn't matter how long the project takes, we just have to start the fall of twenty-five. And that starts the project and then we can take three years or four years. We don't want to because we won't finish as quickly as you can possible, but yes. So, like our clock starts when we sell the project.
And so then we start the clock and when we owe, when, when our.
Exactly, yes.
So, we have eighteen months to even start letting someone away. And also, South Euclid on their own paved one side of, from Cedar to Mayfield already.
That was Cleveland Heights. Did, did that piece?
Cleveland Heights.
Completely independent, yeah, so.
So, that helps us a little bit in terms of traffic?
Correct. Up north of the Walmart on the west side is the next.
Ms. Meiser, something?
Oh, just a minor question. Thank you very much, this is very informative. And I feel bad that we're up against the debt, you know, it's the deadline's funny. But I see on your schedule, it said county approached cities in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Did I miss something? Did you approach the city?
So, we did approach it around Thanksgiving timeframe. And I believe the mayor put something up in January. And the reason why we stopped was because we did not have an engineering firm available to do the design at that time. And that's why we all are, so that's why we're in the process of hiring somebody now. So, it's not the city's timeframe.
So, it's the county engineer? Okay, not the city engineer?
Correct. So, we needed.
So, you didn't go to South Euclid either?
No.
Okay.
You, the, the day we sent the package, which was in the past two weeks.
March nineteen.
March nineteen.
So, after the last council meeting?
Yeah, that's when, that's, and I believe that's the day that we selected the firms as well because we knew we had them coming. We sent the, the identical packages to the two committees.
Thank you for clarifying that, appreciate it.
It's a, dealing with the federal funds and dealing with Noakka and then dealing with, it's a long process. And people might think that eighteen months is a very long time and it's, in our world, it's like three days.
I, I just want to say, I, I'm a grants officer and we also deal with Noakka for purchase of vehicles. We have about, I don't know, fifty or sixty and, yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Ms. Redd?
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question, Mr. King's comment about the schedule. So, since this does transpire over a two-year period, is it possible that this could be in two big packages? One that could get rollout, maybe that's South Euclid, that could give us more time to get our act together on our zoning and design? I, I, I don't want to rush a lifelong decision that's going to impact every resident of the city on such a vital corridor, so is that a possibility?
Yes, that's, that definitely is possible. Okay, we could roll out and, and, and start the South Euclid, start South Euclid first and then.
Not that I want to delay our project anyway, I want, just make sure it's done right. And, and with the, the two bid packages, again, it can still be awarded to the same firm.
Correct.
Same firm's still doing their programmatic design elements through, and, and assist us in what that idea is. But since now that we understand that it's a two-summer construction project, that could give us a little time.
We also could look at it in, within the design process to see approximately like what those curb cuts or those curb bump outs would then be around that area, just to give the city an, you know, an idea of this is what we're looking at. So, we can keep it or we can cut it depending upon the feedback that we get.
And then the reason I suggest the two bid packages as opposed to just one, I don't want to have additional services transpire next year, change the curve here, which we're doing all this stuff after we've already did a final design. So, this is why I kind of want to set away, so that you, you're starting your early design process here and you're tiering. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. You mentioned before you're repaving from curb to curb. Are you replacing curves also?
We vary them all only if around the ADA areas that we need to update the ADA client.
So, in that respect, if we decide to make any changes.
Those changes would be.
That would be us.
That's definitely what I'm saying, yes, yeah.
That would be, that would be us anyways.
That's how we got to figure it out. We're only going to buy it once.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, yeah. Yes.
Mr. King, please. Is this, this may be a question from there. So, is this in relation to the ordinance during twenty-three seventy-eight for the Mountville Resurfacing Project? To discuss in the December eighteen meeting?
We did, yes, yes, in December, we did discuss Warrensville Center Road generally and we had an early version that was merely a placeholder. But the, the items in the packet now is, is updated to reflect what we've been actually asking the council to pass.
That's where the information that Mr. Chuni was presenting at that time, based on the limited information they have.
Right, you know, when, when you go back to the, the schedules, Mrs. Sax touched on, you know, county approaching cities in the fall of twenty-twenty-three, it was the late fall and then Mr. Chuni and I, we had a discussion and you're reflecting, you know, in December of last year when we had that discussion on the red. We did report out based upon the, the, the initial being with, with Mr. Mack and his angulation and others with respect to, you know, this project. And, you know, getting back to what Mr. Mack is saying and Mr. Rock and Mrs. Weiss had also touched on, you know, if we're moving or replacing, you know, curves, that's going to be a city's cost and will greatly expand this project. If what we can accomplish can be done with paint, then that is the ideal here for purposes of this timeline, the design and the, the, the funds that we provided here for this project. It's already a significant project and, and I think, you know, recalling the traffic calming study that GPD conducted last year regarding Warrensville Center Road and recalling also that the, the work that we're all doing together regarding the zoning, it would seem that we would want to make our efforts at, at how we want lanes to be, whatever traffic calming we want to add. If we do bike lanes that are park protected, if we're going to do parkments overnight because of the kind of identity development we're seeing on Warrensville Center. Then we tried all these things first with paint. That doesn't mean that after this project, we want to see ourselves doing something more permanent with paint offers. But, but, you know, as, as it is, you know, we touch on the mid-block crossings. I think most of us agree that that was an interesting idea, but it didn't really work out the way we hoped. And I don't think anybody's here is going to fight them. I know I'm not, I don't, I don't think anybody else is either. So, so, you know, there's something where, you know, we did allocate with curves that are going to come out.
For, yeah, thank you. For the mid-block crossings, I would disagree. And the reason being is that there are students crossing Warrensville in East. Where they're located right now is not where the students are, where those should be. I would advocate to keep those, but in a different area. I mean, I don't want to get into, this is not for me, but that's something that, as we discuss, I would, I would ask for consideration. I think I see another question here with, with Weiss Mayor. This is a, this is a redundancy based on a previous ordinance for this.
Right, it's an addition.
It's an addition, thank you.
Any other questions? This is our first reading, so it'll come on the next.
Great, very good. Do you have a model by any gentleman?
If somebody wants to make that motion, otherwise it will be in the event of the next meeting.
I'm not ready yet. I'll be willing to make a motion to modify ordinance twenty-two fourteen fifteen. Ryan Kyler County consent to construct resurfacing Warrensville Center Road from Fairmont Boulevard to Cedar Road in University Heights. First reading.
I remember this.
Did you?
Well, you're declaring it right, that's right.
Mr. Rock, excuse me.
I thought we were just doing our first reading. I'm not ready to pass, that's May first.
I want. If, if this doesn't impact your, your agenda by May first.
May first, yeah.
If there's any additional information, I'm comfortable waiting till the next council meeting. If other council members feel differently, if you'd like to move forward. On emergency. I guess, I guess that, well, that was my answer, that was something I shouldn't do.
Do, do you want it to move forward today or do you want to wait?
Well, with the design processes, we're going to input on that. So, I'm comfortable getting consent to proceed. Have to proceed with the county because we're going to input on the design process.
So, it's up to you if you want to have it on our agenda tonight or we can do it at the next meeting on Saturday.
I'm, I'm receiving my request. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Whether you can proceed with that or don't, if, you know, if we pass, Mr. Rock. There are, it sounds like you wanted to wait, there may be things you want to research or get more information on. Maybe, oh, these are things that Mr. Mack can provide, that the county can provide. The design elements, I think, are, are way off into the future. I mean, not way, way off, but obviously, they don't need to be determined before we would pass this, whether it's today or two weeks from now. So, if there's something that, I guess I was wanting to know more about what it was you were looking for that would help you for the next one.
To clarify that when I receive this agenda and said first reading, and the way I prepare myself for these meetings is if it's first reading or second reading or on emergency, I prepare myself in such a way. And so, I prepared myself for first reading and not for final passage at this point. It's not to slow this down, I just want to dig deeper, to make sure this is a very expensive proposition. And need to be prepared. Good, thank you, I, I just, we have time to, to have a second reading and, and to take this up next. That keeps us on schedule, right?
Sure. What's next, the council?
Two weeks from now.
And Mr. Mack, if we have to get in touch with you if we have any other clarifying questions, can we get your information from here?
Sure, I, I get cars and I.
Thank you so much.
And I'm going to send the statement of qualification packages for those three firms to the mayor.
If you could also, if you could send them to me or to Mrs. Thomas, we have my email, so you can send them.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I was saying, if, if those qualification packets come in, can you get them out to us at least a week? When like they'd be coming?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Could you get them out like a week in it? Could you get them out like a week in advance of the meeting? Because that stuff, the plow field is going to take time. Oh, there, I think we're going to do it so soon.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, we can sit down in advance, we don't have to wait till the package arrives.
I would appreciate that.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, it was on first reading. And that on two, it's.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-13 authorizing the city to participate in a consortium to invite bids for solid waste transfer and disposal services. Mr. Pennington?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Recently, we had a meeting with the county solid waste district discussing the options for solid waste transfer and disposal services in consortium to obtain bids throughout the county. In order to do this, the solid waste district has asked us to pass a resolution authorizing the mayor to meet with the solid waste district to develop proposal documents and review recommendations to allow for a selection via bid of the disposal facilities. In doing so, they're hoping to go out to bid in June with the final award of the selected facility in September, which would be in time for us to look at our October changeover that we're looking to do with our various facilities from both solid waste as well as recycling. So the following ordinance similarly is in regards to the consortium bid raises for the municipal recycling facility. And it would be in a similar process with the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Pennington? Can you say?
Thank you very much, appreciate you participating. I just made a little comment. This is for solid waste, right?
Yes.
I think I understood that.
I've got any other questions?
How many communities do you have in your district?
I am not sure of the exact number, but it's a good amount of county communities. Mayor, do you recall how many?
It's somewhere between twelve and eighteen. Historically, I don't know of anybody that's dropping out or jumping off that surround.
Thank you. Is there a motion, that's resolution 2024-13?
So moved.
I'll make a second. Is there any discussion? This time sweet follow rule.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Tony?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-13 passes. Resolution 2024-14 authorizing the city to participate in a consortium to invite bids for recycling and processing services. Mr. Pennington just mentioned this is also an invitation for bids?
Yes, it is. This is a similar process to the solid waste. We're dealing with the solid waste district. Again, the same number of communities will be participating and we'll be looking at the municipal recycling facility, which will ultimately determine the items that are available for recycling for us once we roll out the new program.
Do you anticipate this to be a different?
Until we see the bid, we don't know, whether it be to move or among the other suppliers, waste management, one of the others. There'll be, it's a bid process, so they will have to completely bid.
Any questions? Is there a motion? I'm excited.
So information we might be sending out on recycling now might not necessarily be valid when these bids come out.
What we're sending out now is in regards to what currently, obviously. What's in the packets that went out with the, the glasses? We probably stay tuned on the items that will be included in the recycling when we look to roll out with the new carts. Educational materials will go out with those carts in regards to the items that will be recycled as part of that program when we roll that out this fall.
And we should know who the bidder is by before that?
Well, by sometime September, yes.
Sometime when?
September, we should, they should everything.
So this will be resolved by September?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Second, and Miss Marshall? This time sweet follow rule.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. A, aye.
Mr. Tony? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Miss Marshall?
Aye.
Miss Weiss?
Okay, resolution passes. Agenda ID, ordinance 2024-16 authorizing Wallace Cancer Group Incorporated to perform design, engineering and construction administration work in connection with the city 2024 street repair program and declaring an emergency, an emergency. The city engineer comes to the podium just in case there's any questions.
So I had actually a few questions that a quality city engineer about. So we have a few issues with this ordinance. Number one is our current professional service ordinance has a threshold of fifty thousand dollars. And anything above that needs to go out for bid. The issue we have now is timing, number one. That timing is due to a late budget submission. That is the biggest issue right now. If we had the budget earlier, we would not have come into this problem. Number two is I was just informed that the state of Ohio has increased their threshold because of the rising costs from fifty thousand to seventy five thousand dollars, which is something that the, I think, council of the whole should take up to change the ordinance, which I will leave a meeting in the very near future to discuss this with the council of the whole so we can update our professional service ordinance. So that's number one. This ordinance is asking to waive the fifty thousand dollar requirement because of the timing, which I am tending to agree with. We have a new engineer, she's done her due diligence. I do not agree with the fact that we should have been able to do this with an earlier budget. That's a separate discussion altogether. The second issue that we have with this is that the entire project is way over our budget, the street budget. This, what's in our budget is six hundred and one thousand and I think what this has in here is seven hundred and... I'm trying to think, I saw it here.
Seven hundred and fifty eight thousand. Fifty eight thousand dollars contingent.
So this is, that's a, we have two issues here that we got to deal with. So I'd like to discuss them separately and open it up to the floor. I, again, I am okay because of timing, we need to get this, we need to get the streets done to waive the fifty thousand dollar requirement with the caveat that we are going to go back to the council of whole because the state of Ohio increased the threshold. I'm okay with that, I'm not happy with it right now, but I'm okay with that. But the biggest piece is right now that we are way over our budget and we need to, we need to deal with this right now.
Question on that budget, so the budget for capital expense was six hundred. Was the engineering separate from that or was that together?
Yes, so Mr. Pennington, was the design fee separate from the six hundred and one thousand dollars, which was in the budget for street?
We did put a placeholder in the street fund for that.
Okay.
The total for the actual construction contract, we had about fifty six thousand dollars left over in urban money that we can use this year still. And the balance of that six hundred and one thousand was in the street fund, side of the capital funds in the street.
So our street fund had six hundred and one thousand, which was the budget.
Oh, it had five hundred forty.
Five hundred forty five thousand.
Five forty five.
So when we talked, the six hundred and one had the urban money included in it.
Correct.
And then the engineering fee, was that included in the six hundred and one?
There is a provision in the two hundred line. I can look that up if you want to continue if you want.
So I asked that because then maybe around six forty for the construction, so it helps a little bit. Maybe then I'll do that.
Because I know we changed some of the placeholders with engineering.
Yep.
After the first discussion of the budget.
The engineering design fees of five two hundred?
Two hundred, three hundred. Fifty thousand dollars, so aside the net line for engineering services. We had to pay four thousand dollars already this year. I was on the left over a GPD bill, so there's forty five thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents for engineering net line.
So where's this street, where's the city engineer, two hundred fourteen seventy, engineering services of seventy five thousand dollars? Is that for the street and the street infrastructure piece?
Two hundred fourteen seventy, fifty four, zero eight five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the engineering, that was the placeholder.
And there's still seventy five in there?
No, we reduced it after that first meeting.
For that ten hour?
Down to fifty. And then subsequently, we had to pay a small bill, so there's forty five thousand dollars.
That makes way to six hundred and one and then we have another forty five. So there's six forty six right now.
Excuse me, Mr. King. One hundred fourteen seventy, ten forty eight cents, mentioning services general.
That's fifty thirty two, it's down to one hundred, so.
Right, but there's another line item in there for fifty six thousand.
That's for the routine.
Routine.
So essentially, we're about seventy thousand dollars off right now, give or take.
It's cool, yeah.
And Mayor, I mean, when we were budgeting this, when you were budgeting this, what you, I mean, what is this?
I didn't have an engineer.
No, Mr. Chune did all of this before he left.
Yes, we based, we basically had all Mr. Chune's numbers, but Mr. Chune is not here. We do not have Mr. Chune's numbers now, but they're considering. We have, we have Ms. Monty's numbers, which.
Special.
Special, I mean, yes. When we had a city engineer on January second and the engineer was not in front, we went all the way into February without an engineer. And in the meantime, we had to submit a budget and we submitted the budget based upon the information we got about the previous engineer. And I expressed that, how important it was that we have an engineer, the engineer that will be doing the project here so that we could have that engineer's input for the budget. We used the best numbers we had based upon what we knew. And we introduced the budget earlier this year. And we did that, altered that with the city engineer. Now, these numbers, placeholders, they were approximate, they were off by about seventy thousand dollars. Then, you know, I, this is the scope of the work that Mr. Chune suggested we do. I believe the scope is good, I think Ms. Monty thinks so too. We should be finding a way to do this work and adjusting the appropriations accordingly. And I would ask Mr. Kennedy to prepare an appropriations adjustment in order to do that and bring that to you at the next meeting.
So actually, when Mr. Chune prepared this, he had Carol in there also. So he was way off, not as far off. So, I mean, and he, he's never way off like that. So I'm not sure how this, how this got. There was a whole nother street in here. Yeah, Mr. Rock?
Okay, I have a lot of questions. Well, first, let's look at this. Actually, let me back up. I don't see the proposal or contract in our cabinet, so that first and foremost, you submitted a proposal, correct?
I submitted budget, the engineer's estimate so far.
Okay, but the, this particular work you're going to perform is outside your scope. It's not part of the retainer services, so how are you in contract for that?
I will prepare a proposal. Right now, all I wanted to draw attention to was the cost.
Okay, so we will still approve your contract, is that correct? What are we approving today, that we're just approving for them to work on the design? Because it sounds like we don't have a contract yet.
So right now, on the agenda.
Does he have a contract yet?
No, he doesn't.
Okay, so there's no contract. Yeah.
So we're not approving a contract, we're approving... And I'm just nervous here because we're going to authorize you to perform design engineering services without a contract. We've gone down this road before, so... Leave the contract, okay, so that's, let me continue. That was the first question. And I'm nervous about that. Second question, comment really, these aren't necessarily adding up correctly. Six forty plus the seventy three thousand should net seven thirteen.
Yeah, there's, there is an error in it.
Okay. So that'll be adjusted. And then the seventy three thousand, was that the first number you threw out or was that a revised number?
That number, that number is correct based on the six forty above it.
Right, but what I'm asking is when you proposed seventy three thousand, was it higher before? Or, and you came down to seventy three, or was it always seventy three?
It was always seventy.
Okay, and the reason I ask is because I brought this up before and the need for bidding this out, and I understand we don't have the time, that luxury, but we just received from the county today design and construction inspection fees of five percent and five percent, ten total for Orangeville Center Road. And this was agreed upon by a local firm, a national firm and a global firm. And they were okay with the ten percent and your fee's at eleven and a half, so.
Typically, we are somewhere between ten and thirteen.
Yeah.
So first, first project out of the gate, we didn't want to cut our, you know, we didn't want to go under. Last thing I want to do is come back and ask for more money.
I get it. So that's what your typical fees are. The county plays a little bit of a different game, they're at ten percent, so that's something, I think, going forward. That may be a benchmark. And we might see that as we figure that out, we'll, the market will take care of that. Going through these line items here, I thought we were going to do curb replacement for all road program work and it says here we're just going to do minor concrete repairs.
I think that's to the base. We are, we are, it doesn't include concrete work between driveways.
Okay, so the curbs aren't included, I just didn't say it on here. And I don't want to be nitpicky, but, and maybe this is in an effort where we can save some cost, there's two line items here for crack ceiling, which is great, we need that, I'm not trying to take that out. But my question is, what design engineering at five percent would you be doing to substantiate the five percent? But my question is, what design engineering at five percent would you be doing to substantiate the five percent fee on, say, crack ceiling? Again, you'll have some construction administration time where you'll have to look and make sure everything was done in conformance with the documents, but does the five percent design engineering fee, is that substantiated with the amount? I mean, is it just a spec? What, what exactly are you putting in the documents for those particular line items?
It'll probably just include it in the spec.
Okay. So is it possible that, uh, to get this closer to the county standard, you yourself probably won't put as much time in line items four and five? Is there some type of savings that we could, um, take advantage of because of the amount of work we do? Because you are charging a fee on top of the contingency as well, which is fine, because we'll probably use the contingency, I'm not going to doubt that.
And I, just to clarify, I, unless my math is wrong, the eleven, whatever, the twelve percent, seventy-three thousand is on the five eighty-two, right? And on the six forty, do you think that was on?
No, it's off the six forty.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
My math is wrong, sorry.
Um, it's a little less than eleven and a half, I do love it, something, but, uh, those are my thoughts. Um, since we're a little over budget, I came up with a solution, and I hope that's something we can entertain.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have a question?
No, I think Mr. Rock actually, uh, will kind of, uh, take care of it, thank you.
Hey, I just had a, um, what on Warrensville Road are we repairing with the, with the knowledge that in a year, eighteen months, we're going to be?
Um, I think that it's just some, a large area that's bad right now, that Mr. Chuni had put into the budget and into the plan, that it should be taken care of ahead of that project.
Which part, which part is that?
Um, I would have to get back to you on the exact location.
I'm just wondering if there's something that we can hold on, pull out, hold off?
Well, um, so the crack ceiling in the Warrensville Center right here, we are getting money from the county road, rather than maintenance reimbursement.
Oh, so there's some.
For materials, so it's, yeah, they were getting forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, um, from the county, uh, the crack ceiling in the Warrensville Center right here.
So from the seven sixteen, we're, we're going to get forty-six thousand back?
Yes.
The four seven thirteen, whatever. Okay.
Which goes, so.
Yeah, that brings it down significantly.
I don't think it's forty-six. The letter from last year, Don Ward, crack ceiling.
Oh. That was twenty twenty-three, I believe. There is a, um, the city did, did give money for twenty twenty-four.
I, I haven't seen those numbers yet, so.
Okay, so you've seen the letter, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I can send them. Yes, that brings it down significantly, so. I'm just saying, I just need to see what the appropriation has to be after. And I think we need to know what the Warrensville Center Road patch is before we, before we make a determination.
Okay.
Since, um, what that has, like, can we hold off on there, or can't, it could be, I don't know. Mr. Pennington, did you have something to say?
Yes. Uh, just to let you know, the Warrensville Center was something that Joe Chuni put in the project for spot repairs of Warrensville Center. If you look at the area coming right off Cedar, uh, right by the Whole Foods, there's a very bad section, section of road there. Down this side, there's a very bad section of road as well. These are, uh, these are small repair areas that will be done within that money, with the county putting in approximately forty-six thousand dollars worth of, uh, funds for the materials, with the city owing an incredible labor portion of those repairs.
Yeah, that's, thank you. Is it across the street, like by Citizens Bank?
Yeah.
That's terrible.
That vicinity, yes.
It's terrible, yeah.
Yeah, the areas are to be determined, but it's, it's, it's going to go based upon the square footage, but, uh, that is the area that I have in mind.
There's another big one, actually, right off Warrensville is, um, Seale Street Two. So if that was in two, that would be terrible.
Uh, you're talking about in the center of the intersection, where the water main break was.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, there, there was, uh, several water main, uh, uh, preparers done in that intersection. We're in the process of, uh, breaking out those cold patches, and we're in the process of, um, scheduling to run an air award, and, uh, once the asphalt plants open, hit, uh, smash all of that in those locations.
Also, that wasn't a part of?
No, no, that, this was all due to, due to water main breaks.
So, Mr. Kennedy, and, and this, is there a way that we can get an updated cost analysis to phone on appropriate numbers with the offset from the?
County.
County?
Yes.
And, and I guess if, if we're coming back to the other contract too, just so you know where we're going on, will that be holding anything up on our end?
So, well, I'll get this together, and, and I'll circulate it with the mayor, and talk with the mayor. If he doesn't see any issues with it, then it'll be on the next, um, consulting agenda, and we'll go from there. I mean, I have some, you know, some work to go back to and some tidying up to do, so. I am working on it, but we probably won't, we won't see our surveyors, and we won't be drawing any, drawing yet until the contract is signed.
Okay. So anyways, you don't have a contract, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, Mr. Kennedy, can you have those appropriations ready then also at the next meeting? So that can at least be on the agenda as well?
I'll coordinate with President.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, um. Can this, well, I'm just asking the law director to hear this via first view.
Sure.
It's so amazing.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I just didn't feel comfortable about the contract, and I'm sure you're uncomfortable doing work without contracts, so.
True.
Yeah, I mean, and, and probably these numbers are long anyways at this point, so, and then we'll really be able to see exactly what you're pushing, you know, we have to appropriate and, and.
Do you have a timeframe for the design engineering, just a rough estimate, how long to?
Um, well, probably need at least a month to get the plans ready and the spec book, and then go to bidding.
Okay, excellent.
And then we, we'll, we'll make sure that we leave a council, the whole league also, so we can get that updated, that ordinance as well. So, it won't be in two weeks, but we'll show it, yeah, that's why.
And I'd just like to know, this is the engineer's first.
Ready room.
I understand that, and until you get up, totally up to speed, we'll have some back and forth settled out. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm welcome.
Um, the agenda, Leonard E., uh, motioned to approve entering into a five-year lease-to-own agreement with Leas Services Center, DBA, and CL Government Capital for twenty-year GS products, midstar automated side loader dump truck with annual yearly cost of seventy-one thousand, four sixty-six eighty-one. Mr. Pennington?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, in coordination of going forward with the recycling program, uh, we went out, um, for quotations from, on, uh, several bidders, um, not really bid perhaps, but, uh, one of our quotes was from Sourcewell, um, came in at three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for a twenty-year, uh, automated truck. The firm that we, uh, went, uh, looked at is, has come in with a quote of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So twenty-year GS products, uh, midstar automated side loader dump truck, um, with all equipment for, uh, side load, uh, automated, um, recycling services. Um, in, in going forward with this, uh, we, I, I must note that council would need to waive the competitive bidding requirement, as this did not go officially out for bid, however, we did use the section of state bid in the Sourcewell account to come up with a number, and get other competitive quotes, which, uh, we found one that actually beat that. The, um, truck at the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, going through a, going with a five-year lease, put it at seventy-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents per year with a lease to own, where we own the truck at the end of the five-year lease. Um, the original truck that I took to the Service Utilities Committee meeting, when we originally talked about going automated, um, was a truck that was the third number we have in here, it would have been a seven-year lease at about the seventy-two thousand dollar mark. Uh, this truck, um, will do what we needed to do, and, uh, we did demonstrate the truck, uh, about a week ago, and, uh, we are comfortable moving forward with this truck for our recycling services. At this point, I would ask that council, uh, authorize the purchase of the truck with the waiting competitive bidding requirement.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is, I was talking to the law director, that we, um, you know, we'll discuss this motion, but we'll bring it back to put this on as ordinance, um, at the next meeting, um, just because it should be, um, as an ordinance. I think the, the consultant mentioned a rear, a rear auto, automated, I don't know what the example.
The rear temper, the rear temper that we, we talked about in the committee meeting would have required us to hire the additional employee or.
A rear temper requires.
Correct.
Okay.
This is a side, side is automated, where the arm comes out, grabs the can, dumps it into the, uh.
Okay, whoops, sorry, goes right over.
It goes right over into the, the top of the.
I wasn't sure if the rear also.
No, no, the rear, uh, our worker has to move the can to the rear of the truck.
Got it.
Hook it on, automatic, uh, do a, a, a motion there, and then detach the can and put it back.
I mean, although we spoke about that at the meeting. And then also, so I know Sourcewell is the government's, um, website for, for sourcing vehicles.
Yes.
Um, but we also did through that, correct, usually?
Um, we, we get quotes from them on a number of equip, uh, items of equipment, um, it's not, they, they come up with pricing that say, it's actually a quote, state bid, number four, excuse, their, their number is a, a number that's good, edited throughout the, the city, or throughout, throughout the state, that is utilized for purchases of equipment by municipal.
Right, I can answer that question twice, it's, it's kind of like the, the state bid, where there's this particular vehicle, where, you know, state bid price, Sourcewell does that thing, I mean, same process on a national basis. So there may be differences in equipment and things like that, but the main, basic vehicle has already gone through a bidding process by Sourcewell, so this is considered the best place from various vendors.
So this is compared to like when we get a police and fire type vehicles, it's the same thing, but.
Correct.
That's deal available after.
Yes.
Well, we, we did talk about, um, you know, something of this size, this type of purchase is better done by ordinance, and we can explain why we went through the process, we did explain why we're, um, selecting this particular vehicle, so Mr. Kennedy has something in writing, if the auditors were to look at it, you know, why did he decide to buy this vehicle? He didn't go out for a complete bidding process, which may not be practical in this situation, but we can articulate all those reasons in the, in the ordinance. I think what Mr. Pennington said, you know, he's, wants to let them know that, so he can secure the vehicle so they hold it for us, um, so it doesn't get sold to someone else, and we wouldn't issue the purchase order until after the ordinance. Actually, I might, I might help him hold the vehicle so somebody else doesn't buy it from under him, that was his correct?
Correct, uh, currently, they, they do have a freightliner chassis in stock, that they can, uh, dedicate to us to offer a September first, give or take delivery. So by getting them something tonight, we're able to get them to hold the truck for us, and then we can, uh, go forward with the ordinance the next year.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pennington? Yeah, Ms. Watson?
I noticed, um, on the other two bidders, the yard capacity is significantly larger, ones are twenty-six, ones are twenty-seven, and the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar truck is a twenty. Um, those other companies do not supply a twenty. I mean, you've, you've given us three things, but they're not apples to apples, I think is what I'm saying.
Right, the, the one was a, a twenty-six, and I, yeah, thought the other.
The other ones are twenty-seven, I went, I went back to those numbers.
Yeah, I wanted to say that, that might have been a typo on their, their end, because I believe it was supposed to be a thirty, about twenty-year truck on that three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
It showed twenty-seven on.
Yeah, I see, I, I looked at the, the.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, I believe it was, it was to be a twenty-year truck.
It was what?
To be a twenty-year truck, smaller truck, similar to this one.
Even though.
I believe, I believe it was a typo on their, their end, on that twenty, they're saying twenty-seven, should have said twenty.
Okay, um, but we're not positive.
That's, that's.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to grade, I'm just.
No, no, it's, it's my understanding that that was.
Ask the questions and.
It, it's my understanding that it was supposed to be a twenty, twenty-year, and a backer is what that was supposed to be.
Because if they turned around and bid you something higher, that would explain the difference in cost.
Yeah.
So, I, I, and that, just one other thing, if we're going to have, if I'm going to vote on something that costs two hundred and ninety-five thousand, and we got it coming in for a demonstration, I certainly would appreciate elements here, because if I have flights hours a lot of times, and I'd love to see the day of the operation.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't find out it was going to be there until, uh, the day before, actually.
You can, you can, it's worked, come on.
I didn't, uh.
I appreciate that.
Something when it came in, and, uh, I did not get a chance really to put it out to many people. Um, but, uh, I could look into that, that twenty-seven, but my understanding was that that was a twenty-year truck.
Yeah, I, do, do we need, obviously, we don't need something that large.
We, we don't need, uh, something that large. Uh, for, for recycling purposes, twenty-year truck would more than handle what we're doing through recycling.
And it obviously is the best price, so. I was just wondering if the other companies were comparative, did a smaller, you know?
Well, I, I can tell you, the curb tender, uh, did indicate that the delivery of that truck would be something like twenty-five.
So delivering also is a factor.
Deliveries, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Pennington?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Mr. Pennington, do you know if there is an ability to pay off the lease early or to buy it out?
Um, I'm not sure of the, it, it's, it's a five-year term at, at the seventy-one thousand, or you do not write purchase with two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
And the reason I'm asking is that, uh, the Ohio EPA has a program where they offer up to two hundred thousand dollar grants for curb side recycling programs. Um, unfortunately, we're way along the, uh, the application cycle right now. Um, the, the application is typically up to, like, December first, and then they're awarded sometime in April, sometime, you know, April, May, June, at the bottom of the year. Um, I'm not sure if, if we were to consume something like that, if we could use it to buy out it, or if we would have to be purchasing something new, but, uh, it was just something I had looked into a couple of years ago when we first started talking about, um, curb side recycling. And, uh, there've been a couple of communities in the area who have been awarded this last year, not Cleveland Heights and Main Field Village, were both awarded two hundred thousand dollars each. Not to throw another wrinkle into this, but, uh, it would just, I'd just be interested to know, uh, if, if there is any sort of option to, to buy the lease.
I, I really didn't answer that at this time.
Sure, sure.
One of the other options that we would have then is, at some point, we're going to need to get a second truck for the dumbness purposes, for, give the truck list out for maintenance, that sort of thing. Um, maybe there's something to look at the grant for that, that additional vehicle at some point.
So this is our, we lease this truck as our dipping our toes into the curb side recycling business, and then when we go to get something else, we could go up to, we could be mindful and. and then when we go to get something else, we could go up to, we could be clientful and try to get in a bidding cycle.
I think that's.
Grant cycle.
Yes, I believe that's what I'd like to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington.
Mr. Pennington?
Yeah, I've been a lot for all this whole grant thing, so, um, you know, we're not going to secure the truck right away. It takes how many months to build?
Right now, they have, since they have the truck in stock, they will have it ready by September.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, could you apply later since you don't have to receive the truck? We're way off, unfortunately.
We're, we're. He's supposed to, it's only valid for four days. So we've got any points?
Yes. Um, okay, so that's unfortunate, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. The only concern I have is, you mentioned dipping our toes and I, and I, I share similar sentiment. I, I, I hope this program is a success, uh, but I want a plan in case it is not. And so this particular truck can't service any of our other rubbish needs because it's a automated truck. Whereas when we were looking at the rear load packer vehicle, it could be used if, if it's not for, if you don't have the tipper, you just take the tipper off and you can use it for a trash pickup, so at least it has some flexibility with that. So I'm a little concerned about that, but if we had bought the truck, then sure, it's not a success, we could just sell the truck. That's, that's how we could do that, but if we're leasing it, what are our options to get out of the lease in the event this doesn't spark as much interest? Now, there's interest, there's, we mentioned a few hundred houses, so that's, that's good, but just in the event it doesn't really take off and we have to plan for plan B, are we able to get out of the lease?
At this point, I don't know that I can answer that question. I did not look at the termination clause in the, uh, in the lease.
Sorry. It's something where we just buy out the lease and sell it, and I know we did hose on that, but, you know, I don't want to not have some type of flexibility.
Um, I have a question for the law director. So we made this motion, we're basically holding this truck, but we're not purchasing it yet. It, it could come back with the ordinance, we can have all of the lease documentation in the next meeting?
Yeah, I believe you, uh, it was included in the package, and I'll, I'll go look into it.
If we can, if we can get that at the next meeting, then we'll have the ordinance.
That'll be a car.
Thank you. Uh, both, Ms. Mayor. I, I appreciate your summary. I'm going to be optimistic. I'm going to say we're going to have to apply first. And I hope it happens.
Doesn't hurt to plan.
Okay, great. Is there a, um, can we amend the motion? Do we need to amend the motion to, um, state that an ordinance will be forthcoming or we need to do that?
I, I don't think you need to do that.
Yes.
Approving it, I think, I, I, I would amend it to say, um, you're going to have an ordinance and that the purchase order wouldn't be issued, so a subsequent ordinance on this transaction. So yes, I think there's a good idea to amend the motion.
So move to amend the, uh, motion to add. Uh, let's see, motion to approve entering into a five-year lease, um, contingent. Um, and the ordinance being prepared and lease documents, lease documents being produced.
With purchase order not issued.
And then.
Right, with the purchase order not issued until the.
Yeah, and purchase order not issued until ordinance is approved. But only do it that way. And then to, at the end, say, um, contingent, um, the ordinance being prepared, the purchase order not being released until the ordinance is approved, period.
Okay, I'll second that and I think the motion. And then, and then just even.
Are you waiting for them to bid?
Yeah, I, that'll be taken care of in the ordinance. Okay.
And is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Okay, Mrs. Tansley, color roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Zett.
Aye.
Mr. Cooley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright. Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Um. And we, we made a motion, are we?
Yes, that was the motion to amend.
Okay, um, I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second, if I can.
Mrs. Spencer, over.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Zett.
Aye.
Mr. Cooley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington, thank you. Um, we do have an executive session, um, I think, is this table here?
Yeah, it's here.
Is it for real estate matters?
No, I think that the purpose would be to discuss, uh, um, imminent or threatening court action.
Well, it's legal proceedings. Okay, is there, is there a motion to enter executive session for legal proceedings?
No.
For a second?
Second.
Mrs. Tansley, color roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Zett.
Aye.
Mr. Cooley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wise.
Aye.
If we will just, um, go through the reports of standing committees, um, before we go into executive session and then, um, just for the law director, do you, do you have any, uh, jump up items actually to have with, with the executive session?
No.
So, um, building and housing.
Uh, there will be a building and housing meeting at six P M before the next council meeting on the fifteenth. Uh, there will be a number of items published on the agenda. We have the safe bill contract and a number of other things that we do need to resolve.
Thank you. Any doubt, Mr. King?
No, I can't at this time, if I can.
Oh, I have a question. Did you send out a Google on that?
I have not, Ms. Marshall.
Okay.
Um, economic development?
Development, yes. Uh, as we spoke and Ms. Trucker's comment, it sounds like we'll have a meeting, um, sometime in the next few weeks and I don't want it to summer and, uh, like I said, I would like to get the committee together to solicit feedback on what we've already heard to make sure we're going in the right direction. So, I would be all over that.
Okay, um, finance, we will have a finance committee meeting in May for our quarter of the meeting and there will be a to-do call shortly. Um, recreation, Mr. King?
Thank you. Uh, we had a recreation committee meeting, uh, on, uh, March, uh, twentieth. Um, the, part of the discussion I was regarding first part, the roaming expenses, uh, we did, uh, collect the recommendation for the coal fee schedule, uh, which I provided to the mayor, uh, consideration. We also, uh, discussed overtime and resources required for the fall past and June to events from the Fire, uh, Police and Service Department. They provide estimates for what may be needed, which can be, uh, used, uh, as part of a twenty-twenty-five budget, as part of the items, uh, for that. Uh, but there's also, we discussed the, uh, status of the right tennis court repairs that will be going under, uh, waiting hopefully sooner than later, uh, to get ready for the, uh, summer season, which will include the, uh, we will, uh, have two pickleball courts, uh, at the, uh, approach park. Uh, and also to improve the, um, characters, uh, improving the process for, uh, potential, uh, use of the tennis courts throughout the summer, notification process, we're going to have a, uh, a board that's at the tennis court that will describe what their, uh, perhaps, uh, tennis lessons that are being, uh, provided or any other, uh, activities maybe up there. So we're, our residents, to be aware of that and plan accordingly and ask questions, uh, firmly. So thank you for the committee members, uh, for that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. Um, this one's show safety?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Uh, we didn't have a safety meeting today because the, um, police chief or the fire chief didn't have any items for the agenda. We were planning to have a meeting on, um, May sixth. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, service and utilities, Ms. Zett?
Thank you. The next service and utilities committee meeting will be on Monday, June tenth at six P M. The agenda's still in process, but you heard a little sneak preview with, uh, the engineer and the service director. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and, um, committee of the whole, uh, there is a committee of the whole meeting on Wednesday. We will be touring the Brooklyn Park, um, police station, which is connected to their city hall. I'm sorry, Brooklyn, which is connected to their, um, city hall. Um, we have invited the facilities and infrastructure committee as well. There is, there will be a facilities and infrastructure committee meeting, which is a, um, a subsidiary of the council of the whole in May as well to discuss our final assessment of everything, um, of all of our, um, tours, um, with the goal of beginning police and fire, um, plans. Um, those are the, the, um, first phase one piece, uh, in terms of our facilities. I, uh, if there is additional funding or if there is funding available, um, city hall will be, um, discussed, but right now, police and fire are the priorities right now. Um, and as well, there will be a council of a whole meeting scheduled, um, like we discussed, to, um, update our professional service ordinance as well. So those are the two meetings that will be scheduled. Um, are there any reports of special committees are taking action thereof?
If, if, I mean, just with regard to the Brooklyn visit on Wednesday, Mary Bancourt is a firm now at six thirty, so we want, make economical use of the time during that one.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished shirt in this latest business? Do we not go into executive session? Thank you.